You're blue now.
I like everybody out here. I am.
So who's gonna pay for the Quiet Place?
Quiet Place.
Who's gonna pay for the Quiet Place?
What's happening on your phones?
So is the Great. Lots of people in our boardroom and lots of questions and answers and back and forth. So without any further ado, I would like to say that if there's gonna be a question or two, a lot of people are gonna have questions and we want to get to everybody's question or comments. And if you have the same public comment or comment as other folks, you know, to try and not reiterate it each time and just maybe raise your hand and say, "I agree," or, you know, something of that nature, so we're not repeating ourselves, you know, here till seven or eight o'clock at night. Because we definitely want to hear all the questions and comments and everything from everybody. So I think to start off here, we've got Marcus here. And maybe you'd like to start off with anything new that you might have, new information from your previous meeting, and I believe you said that there might be some, so. And then maybe we'll move into questions from the public and go from there.
Okay, thank you. Mark Beer is my name, I'm in Siskiyou County. I'm one of the spokespersons for the Jefferson Declaration Committee. And first, I just want to start out by saying that Thomas Gordon said in 1721 that every plowman knows the difference between good government and bad. He knows, and the way is open to common sense. He knows because he knows how much of his produce he gets.
Can you get closer to the mic, please?
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
Can we turn it up?
At that point, I'm okay. I'll try to lean into it.
Turn it up some.
He knows because he knows how much of his produce he gets to keep. The point here is that California is broken. That's plain for anybody with eyes and ears. We see that every day in our taxes. Fuel taxes just went up again. We're in the highest tax state almost in the nation. And we think the reason we're there is because of lack of representation. And that's, there's certainly a lot of circumstances where we can point to that. The idea of the Jefferson State Initiative or Declaration is to restore representation to the rural counties of California, and hopefully the rest of California will see what we've done and restore representation there as well. We don't know what the fallout could be, but it has to be good, because more representation is always good. What we want is a state senator for each county in the state of Jefferson. As I explained to the editorial board of the Reading Search Live, and they haven't been particularly friendly to us, I said, "Look, in Shasta County, it's possible that the city of Reading may go purple or even blue in the future." It's, those things happen in urban areas. But it won't matter, because you don't have representation here that represents your needs or your wants. Even if Shasta County went purple or even blue in the future, it's irrelevant, because you won't have representation. It doesn't matter whether you have a predominantly Republican county, because you don't have representation. We spoke to Brian Dally in the Capitol. We spoke to the minority leader in the Assembly. The minority leader in the Assembly, after I gave her the pitch, she said that she not only supports grassroots movements, she supports local control where decisions can be made locally. She supports the Jefferson Declaration, will vote for it when it comes up, and will try to get the members of her caucus to vote for it. I spoke to Brian Dally in the Capitol. He said, "If you can show me that this is physically viable, I'll support it." He says, "You know, everybody knows that one-size-fits-all government in California doesn't work, and it certainly doesn't work in my district." And these are his words to me, and Fox News was there, I think that made the DVD. He said that one-size-fits-all legislation doesn't work in California. I did speak to one state senator from Los Angeles, and they have 11 state senators in Los Angeles, where we have one senator that represents 11 counties. And he said, "No, no, a thousand times no, because you just want to take our water." Let that sink in for a second. You just want to take our water. And, you know, that's how they truly see it. They see it as all water in the state of California flows south, it belongs to them, they need it to grow and to continue to build the things that they're building. And the fact that the water originates somewhere else is irrelevant, because those people don't have the representation to change the dynamic. And that's what the state of Jefferson proposes to do. Okay, so some of the questions are, "What about the resources?" In other words, in the state of Jefferson, the feds are still gonna be the feds. And we have several answers to that. Now, look, these are not guarantees, but they're very substantial legal premises which we can use to return local control of resources. The first of which is the equal footing doctrine. And that would be Pollard-Lecey versus Hobart. In the Supreme Court, it was an Alabama case where, when Alabama was formed, the Congress set conditions on the state of Alabama that they would not own the tidelands around the state. And the Lecey-Pollard was fishing in those tidelands. And where Alabama was gathering revenue from that resource, the federal government stepped in and said, "Wait a minute. We placed a condition on you that even though, because we're giving you statehood, doesn't mean you get to keep all the land that you have, nor the water on the land. And so we're going to claim jurisdiction of all of your tidewaters and all of the lands therein, so that the federal government will receive those fishing revenues." And the Supreme Court stopped that, and they said it wasn't so much a question of property rights. It was a question of sovereignty and jurisdiction over the land within the borders of Alabama. And that was back in 1840, I think, or '45. And what they said in Pollard-Lecey versus Hobart was that all states that enter the national stage enter with equal sovereignty to the original 13. Now, California lost a case, California versus the United States, regarding the three-mile buffer offshore. The federal government, and I believe this is rightly so, since the federal government has to defend the United States against border aggression, the federal government's jurisdiction extends into the ocean and not the state's jurisdiction. And that was over oil leases. Since then, some compromise was made. However, consistently, Coyle versus Smith was another case in Oklahoma where the Congress enacted conditions on the state of Oklahoma as part of its Enabling Act. And I believe the particular condition was they wouldn't be allowed to move their state capital or something like that. And the court disagreed with Congress and said that no state will have Enabling Acts which are detrimental to the Constitution of the United States. And to deny this is to deny the sovereignty of certain states as opposed to other states. And since 1796, I believe, all states have the provision in their Enabling Act, that legislation which physically creates the state, that they enjoy equal sovereignty to the original 13. The original 13 is very important, because the original 13 don't have federal lands, very, very little, national parks and trust land. And that's not our argument. Our argument is not with trust land. Our argument is with the ability of the state to exercise its sovereignty over the resources within that land that could affect public health and safety. In Siskiyou County, we had fires totaling a quarter million acres in one summer, largely on federal trust land, but they escaped into private land and BLM managed land and so on. And in that quarter million acres, several communities were endangered. I'm a reserve deputy sheriff with Siskiyou County, and I spent 12 nights on the fire line evacuating people from their homes, because the U.S. Fish and Wildlife and the United States Forest Service and California Fish and Game refuses to acknowledge that healthy stands management can save communities in addition to creating revenue for those communities. The Northwest Timber Harvest Plan, once again, this is, we're not anti-law or anti-government. I believe in the law, I love the law. But in the Northwest Timber Harvest Plan alone, which was a very poor plan enacted so that rural counties could receive PILT or receipts from responsible timber harvests, that money alone in Siskiyou County used to pay for the entire road department, the entire public instruction department, and the sheriff's department. Now with California Fish and Game in charge of the Spotted Owl Program, our revenue from those stumps is zero. And the resulting overcrowding in the forest and overstocked fuels almost cost several towns all of their homes. And the fire in the weed, which was a direct result of overstocked forests, cost 150 people their homes and really burned down half the town. And I was in that town, yanking people out of their houses while the neighbor's house is on fire, and the seniors were in there saying, "Wait, my cat, my cat." I mean, you can't imagine the devastation caused by these wildfires. Well, you can, this is a timber community. So, so, control of the resources, I think, the Enabling Acts and the equal footing doctrine. And if we look at the Western Lands Council in Utah, there is certainly precedent, and it's good legal precedent to regain control of federally managed lands within the state for the state's beneficial use and to place those lands back on the tax rolls in some manner. And that will address the resources. I covered Montana, LLC versus Montana. Oh, that was a good one, because in the Montana case, the Supreme Court held that the state owns all of the land beneath navigable waters and controls the waters thereof that are not otherwise controlled by the feds. And by navigable waters, the Supreme Court was very careful to say, "Those are waters that are traditionally used for commerce." In other words, the Mississippi River, the Missouri River, where ships go up and down the river. Now, since then, the court has said, in some legal opinions, that the founding fathers didn't mean what they said with the equal footing doctrine. But there are several Supreme Court cases where there is precedence, it's good solid precedence, and it's precedent we can use. Because we will have a state government that has the backbone to stand up to the feds and reclaim beneficial use of these lands for the counties. The Alabama case, I recovered that. Coyle versus Smith, that was the state of Oklahoma, I recovered that. Justice Lurk in the Coyle versus Smith case said, "The power to admit new states into this union is one that's dependent upon sovereignty. New states must enjoy equal sovereignty with all of the other states, or why would anyone want to join the union in the first place? What good does it do us as citizens to have two classes of people? One class in a state that enjoys sovereignty and one class in a state that doesn't? Why would anyone want to participate in that?" And that's what James Madison said in the Virginia declarations. He said, "We cannot have two classes of sovereignty. All states must have equal sovereignty with the original 13, or the United States won't function." And he was right about that. Federalist 46, the founders were looking for balance in government. We don't have that now. Balance to the founders was dead center. On one end, you have anarchy, and on the other end, you have tyranny with laws and regulations that are so dense and so thick and so obtuse that people have no say over anything in their own lives. And what the founders said was that government and people are not subservient to the federal government. States are not subservient to the federal government. The federal constitution is a contract that the states created in order to have someone to speak for them in their common interest against foreign enemies, foreign commerce, interstate commerce, and things where states as individuals would not be affected in negotiation. And so, when the states ratified that law, they ratified the Constitution of the United States so that laws pursuant to that constitution would have sway over the states. Only laws that are pursuant to the Constitution, not laws that are extra constitution. The common, some of the common objections to the state of Jefferson is that we would have to buy assets from the state of California. One thing the Six States Initiative did for us, it was a failure, I'm kind of glad, I thought it was just a poorly constructed idea, but we got a lot of research for nothing out of that. The state's legislative analyst office with Camilla Harros at the helm, our state's attorney general, her legal opinion is that the new state would own all of the assets within its borders that formerly belonged to the state of California. We are not going to have to purchase prisons and colleges from California. Remember, we are Californians now. We were Californians when those things were built, and we paid taxes to help to build them. And therefore, those assets within the new state will belong to the new state just as they belonged to California before. We are not going to have to purchase them from California with funds that we don't know the origin of. Calpers and calsters, what about state employees? What about their pensions? The last thing on earth we want to do, because one thing I'm interested in personally, and I think I speak for everyone in the room, we have to be a moral people or this won't work. We need to operate this state on a very high degree of integrity. We need to include all of the parties that exist now, political and otherwise. In order to do that, we have to have the integrity to follow through on contracts that are now in existence. It's going to cost some money, and we have that figured out in the financial analysis. We have the debt figured out. But what we have to do with people who have calpers, first of all, Article 1, Section 10 of the United States Constitution says that no state will make a law that changes contract law. And I'm paraphrasing. So in the state of Jefferson, if you are a calpers employee, you will continue to be a calpers employee, and we'll figure out a way to pay for that. That's the right thing to do. I'm 62 years old. The last thing I wanted was for my company to shut down and steal my pension. I can't imagine the nightmare that that would cause. We must honor those contracts, period. Calsters, we must honor those contracts. When those contracts come up for renegotiation, as is the case with all bargaining entities, they're free to bargain with anyone they want to. If they want to bargain with calpers, they can. No state should be able to stop that, unless the parties who are bargaining wish to stop it. What we propose to do, in order to save money, we propose to construct a method that will protect the state employee and not harm the taxpayer by attrition. In other words, when new employees are hired, they will have the opportunity to look at the deal they're being offered, the benefits package, which I foresee as a defined contribution instead of a defined benefit. That's something that you can budget for easily. You'll know exactly. When I joined World Airways, something like 43 years ago, I was handed a statement on my first day. And they told me, "When you retire, you're going to have this much money in your account." And they, it wasn't off by very much, because they could budget for that. In year one, you deposit 500 bucks; in year two, it was 750; in year three, it was whatever it was, until my retirement date. That defined contribution plan is something that counties can easily budget for, and there are no unfunded liabilities unless you choose to attack that in that manner. With a defined benefit plan, you can't possibly budget for it, because you have no idea what the market's gonna be. So what we propose to do with state employees is provide new employees a package, a benefits package, that protects the employee and protects the taxpayer. Existing employees will continue to deal with their collective bargaining unit until they retire, and they're no longer a problem with the state of Jefferson. They'll just be paid. And we'll have to figure that out. That's part of the cost of separating the state. Water, what do we do about the water? Article 1, Section 10, once again, says that no state will make a law that changes contract law. However, there are Supreme Court cases that give new states precedence over water rights. Holt versus U.S. Bank in Colorado was one of those. We can use a new state foundation with equal sovereignty in order to renegotiate every single water right. Now, the Central Valley Project, and this is the one senator's argument, he said, "You just want to shut off our water." Well, first of all, once water goes down the hill, it's available for the next guy to use. I don't care how much Siskiyou County would like to stop the Sacramento River at Mount Shasta. It's not only not possible, it's not feasible, and it's wrong, because there are downstream users. However, there are principles of rightarian right, and there are principles of date. In other words, first in time and first in right. So the people here who have private water rights that predated the Constitution of California, those water rights are off the table. As far as I'm concerned, that's ex post facto. We can't touch those. Federal contract rights are another story. When we enter the national stage as a new state, we have every right in the world with the state government that has some backbone, in order to renegotiate that right for the benefit of the people who live next to the river, over the people who live 900 miles away from the river and just want free water. One suggestion we made in Tahama County was a transfer fee. Perhaps it's not possible for you to touch the water that comes out of the Trinity River. However, those, that infrastructure runs through your county. Your children are falling in that ditch. Cars are getting stuck on the bridges. You're maintaining the roads that go around that infrastructure. Why can't you not attach a $200 acre-foot transfer fee? And some counties are doing that. In other words, if we have our own state, many, many, many things are possible. If we don't act, none of those things are possible, and the economic train we've been on for the last 50 years is going to continue unabated to some destination that I'm telling you I won't want to live with. And quite frankly, my wife says, "Let's move. You know, let's go to Idaho." And we can, we're mobile. But what we would rather do is move the boundary line so that we can live in a free state and stay with our friends and our neighbors and our relatives. So that's, that's all the new information I have. I do have, I do have the finances here. I tried to print that out, and for some reason, my printer did not like the format at all. I'd be happy to pass that around. Last year, we only had three counties. And by the way, these figures have been invented by county administrative officers, about six of them. These figures are true and correct. They're not our opinion. They're numbers that we got from California's databases from several sources, because as you're probably aware, there's no place in California you can go to get the idea of the money in one place. You have to search many, many, many websites. So I have figures. Your county is in the black in the state of Jefferson. It's in the black right now. Last year, we had three counties that were in the red. This year, with the continuing policies of California, we have four counties that are in the red. If we wait two years, we'll probably have six or eight counties that are in the red. This line is down in California. There's no arguing with that. Anyone with eyes and ears will tell you that. The only open question is, do you want to reverse that line? The declaration and petition is carefully worded to create standing for this county in order to participate in the conversation regarding increased representation in Sacramento. We have enough counties now. That conversation will take place. The open question is, do you want a seat at the table in order to gain a state senator for each county? That's what we want, is standing. This declaration costs you nothing. It doesn't change anything. It has no legal weight, none whatsoever, within the county of Plumas or the state of California, unless and until we start talking about representation, either in the legislature or in court. And we will be doing both of those things. I can guarantee you that. I would like to see Plumas County included in this conversation, because it's important for you to have a state senator. By the way, in Jefferson, no county will be left out, no matter how small. Every county will have a state senator. When I go to Sacramento, the first thing I see are crowds of lobbyists in that, in the Capitol hallway. If you have a state senator, do you need a lobbyist? If you have an assembly person for, one for 30,000 people, you can go to either your state senator or your assembly person and ask them for something directly on behalf of Plumas County, and you've got a chance. When you ask someone like your state senator who shares 11 other counties, he's got to weigh your interests with a lot of moneyed counties down below, and let me tell you, when they swing the bat, they're swinging it pretty hard. I was in a lot of the water bond meetings with Jim Nielsen. I finally asked him, "Why do you invite me to these things? I'm the only one in the room that's against this." He says, "Well, I want to know what the smaller counties think." Out of the 12 counties that voted against Prop 1, 10 of them were in the state of Jefferson. But every representative we have supported the water bond, because they have to balance their interests with counties that are not in the state of Jefferson and have different needs than you do. And guess what? With fewer people, you're gonna lose every time unless you have direct representation. And that's what we're talking about here. This goes back to the 1602 verbiage, the wolves, everything. With direct representation, you have a chance. Without it, things are gonna continue exactly as they are. I don't have any more statement to make. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Could you email or electronically transfer your financial data that you couldn't print to the board?
I can, I can ask Steve Baer to do that technologically. He's certainly up to the task where I may not be. But it's on SOJ51.com under Finance. And that model is variable, by the way. It has a variable tax rate. It has, we made an assumed tax rate over all the counties of 8% sales. It's less in some, it's more in others. So we average that. You can change your tax rate, you can change the gas tax rates, you can do all of those things within the model and see how your county falls. But just with the assumptions that we made based on California's figures, let me find it here. You have a $55 million surplus in Plumas County. And I know California says we're red counties. I just, I find their arithmetic to be fuzzy logic. We have now four counties that are in the red, Del Norte at $9 million, Modoc at $9 million, and Tahama, excuse me, Trinity, at $43 million, which is odd, because Trinity County sits in the highest value timber in the state of California. It's almost all dug fur. They have 19 mills. Now they have one, and Jim Bailey gets his logs from British Columbia. Recently opened up a resource, Trinity County would be in the black very quickly.
Okay. So you're...
You guys, you were here October 14th. The Board of Supervisors has specifically asked for financial information. You said you would give it to us.
Yeah, and I asked someone to give it to you, and I apologize, but I can, I'd be happy to pass this around right now if you'd like to look at it.
Well, you know, you want us to buy this. We wanted the financial information, and we didn't get it.
Yeah, well, I apologize, yeah, that's probably my fault.
Okay.
Can we hit forward and send it?
I could try.
Okay, so let's move on to the public comment period in this session here, and what I spoke about earlier, I try not to repeat it. And I'll direct all your comments towards the board, and you'll need to get off the way.
Sure.
Right now, the head...
[applause]
Yeah. If you'd like to say anything, that'd be great. And we'll allow three minutes per individual, and we'll start with the gentleman back here.
Hi, my name is John Kidwell. I wanted to ask Mark if he could assist to explain, because we've had a lot of response and discussion with everyone in this county, but primarily and specifically supervisors, about the impact or the value of a referendum. But if you recall, the last time we met here, there was a suggestion that a referendum may be an idea that should be considered, and in thinking about that and what the impact is, and whether in fact it's a useful tool, and so on and so on. Could you speak to that issue?
Yes.
Is that okay? Sure.
Okay. The declaration and petition to withdraw, as I said, carries no legal weight. And so, all it does is create standing for the county. It's also an open document. You're free to change that to anything you wanted to say. You are free. If we gain statehood, it's five minutes before the stroke of the pen. If this county wants to opt out, all you have to do is vote by majority at this board, and you can opt out. What we, what we realized with the declaration and petition is, the initiative typically will go to the voters, but they don't have enough information. And I'm sorry about that, but there's just no way to get everybody in the county to show up to a meeting. We try, and we would rather do that. We're not afraid of the ballot box, will win or we lose, and then on we go. However, the declaration itself simply gives you standing. That's all it does. Sutter County Board of Supervisors, they changed their declaration, and it was worded to say, "If Jefferson statehood looks like a reality, we will put this to a vote of the people of Sutter County." And then they passed the declaration. I think that was five to nothing, I believe. So you're certainly free to do those things in order to give your population a chance to vote on it before statehood happens. Our problem is, we have a narrower window. In order to have legislation passed, we need a spot bill by the end of January, and we need legislation completed by the middle of March. Now, we might wait until next year, that could change the dynamic. However, we have enough counties to start that conversation now, and the window is going to close at some point. And what we're trying to do now is rush around and give every county an opportunity that wants to change the way they do business with their state, the opportunity to do that before that window closes.
Is there a particular document? Because there wasn't any, anything in the back of, so we can just pick up whatever we want and then vote on it?
You didn't get a declaration?
No, we, there's no background.
The board didn't get a declaration?
Two of the members got a declaration. I have one with me right now.
Yeah, this, this is an open document. You can change this to say anything you want it to. The important things in it, in order to establish the standing, you got a couple more. Keep that or vote. In order to establish standing, it needs to say declaration and petition, and it needs to include your legal description, and it needs to sentence "lack of representation." That will give you the standing in court you need when, if we have to sue the federal government over dilution of vote, or the state of California, I'm sorry, over dilution of vote and lack of representation. And by the way, this is a movement of the people. This county will not be asked for one nickel to pay for any lawsuit. We're doing this ourselves. All you're doing is affirming local governmental support that you don't have enough representation.
Okay. Mark, I saw you had over there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mark Menhovick from Graygol.
A little louder, Mark.
Fasten your seatbelts, this could get... This could get bumpy, everybody. To me, there's no doubt that our democracy is disintegrating into an oligarchy, or more to the point fascism. Or maybe we are already there and people just don't know it yet. Today's agenda description is discussion and possible action on support of the state of Jefferson. Under normal circumstances, this would be a welcome discussion. I concede the larger states being divided and changes to our constitution to support proportional representation based on many parties. I'm not against adding a new state like Jefferson. What I am against is who is doing it. The state of Jefferson advocates are extreme, right-wing Tea Party Republicans. Their handouts and flyers say it all. They believe in smaller government. Government isn't described by size. It is described by effectiveness. They believe in lower taxes, less taxes, which translated into English means fewer taxes, fewer agencies, and social services reevaluation. They don't believe in paying for anything and our constitutional mandate of providing for the general welfare. Education and welfare will be underfunded, if at all. They will destroy our education system with their new curriculum and textbooks and forget about Obamacare. The handouts say that they don't believe in air quality laws, renewable energy and energy storage, or greenhouse, that's two separate words in their handouts, greenhouse gas reductions. They want less regulation and a better business climate. What all this means is that businesses will pay no taxes and are free to pollute the air, land, and water. And forget about any progressive energy sources like solar or wind. But their main motivation is our natural resources. They will cut down our forests. They will destroy our critical watershed. They will pollute the air and the water. While a few stakeholders, the ones offered a seat at the table, would be financially rewarded, the residents and the environment will gravely suffer. These are the people who think Agenda 21 is out to get them. They'll probably want to erect a fence around the entire state and put up a sign that says, "Whites only." Yes, they want freedom. Yes, they want freedom. Freedom, freedom, freedom. It's a heavily in buzzword. Yes, they want the freedom to create a disastrous form of governance. I cannot see this board supporting this state of Jefferson. I respectfully request that you make a direct motion of non-support. However, because I believe in democracy, may I suggest that this most democratic and most diplomatic path to take...
Mark, that's great.
I've been interrupted. Can I please finish one sentence?
Okay.
This gentleman is not even on the agenda. He had more than 20 minutes.
Okay. Yeah, I was... Anyhow, go ahead. Do you want to finish this sentence?
However, okay, last sentence. However, because I believe in democracy, may I suggest that the most democratic and most diplomatic path to take would to make a motion that this board recommends that the residents of Plumas County vote on the state of Jefferson. Thank you.
All right. Michael. Three minutes.
Michael Jackson, resident of Quincy and proud resident of the state of California, which has been very, very good to me, my family, my grandparents, and everybody else involved. I grew up in Redding. I'm very happy to find out that the Redding record searchlight, or the reckless flashlight, as we used to call it, is on the right side of this one. This is by far the most dangerous presentation I've heard in 45 years that I've been watching politics. I will do whatever I can do in Sacramento to kill this plan because it will protect my community to do that. California is not only a very large state, but a very powerful state. I listened to a whole bunch of very old, outdated, unsupported law earlier today. I can't, I'll take it all apart in front of the state of California, but I can't, I'm not going to do it here. I don't have, only got three minutes. This will wreck our schools. It will wreck our healthcare. It will absolutely destroy any nonpartisan stuff that happens in this county. There is no reason for the Board of Supervisors to butt into this. You're elected to be nonpartisan. And board after board after board has worked together to tear us away from the state that we love is something that's going to cause each and every one of you opposition of at least 40% of the community to begin. We won't be helping. We won't be, because what you're doing is you're attacking not only our state, but our country. I feel a lot like West Virginia felt. When the traders left in Virginia for the Confederate states, West Virginia immediately said, "We're not going with them. We're Americans. We want a state of our own." And that was the last time this was done. Couldn't have been done if it weren't for the fact that the, that the states split up over, because Virginia wouldn't have let them out. And so that's exactly what's going to happen here. I know board members in every one of the counties. I don't think you're going to get a lot of support. And if in fact you want to do, to do this, let's stop right now and make that clear and start the fight for our state.
My name is Howard Thomas. I'm a longtime Plumas County resident since 1970. Almost classes me as an old timer. And I'm sorry, I don't have any prepared notes. I may be a Republican, and I may think about the Tea Party. I've certainly read about it. I've read about a lot of leftist stuff too, over the time. So I don't have any point except to make the point that representation is what this is all about.
Yes, it is.
We as people in the northern counties have no, basically no representation at all. Not only in the county or at the state level, but at the federal level. And I know Mark didn't mention anything about, at least maybe it went over my head, but if we form a state of Jefferson eventually, we would have two senators to the United States government. Right now, who represents Plumas County?
No.
And the answer is no one. There is no one that represents us. We have a Barbara Boxton, a Dianne Feinstein. I haven't voted for Dianne. I'm not sure I'd do it again, but that's a different story. We would have two federal U.S. senators from this county area, which would make a huge difference. And I've heard people trying to talk you into not voting on this. Just remember that this is a vote so you can research and study the chances of a new state. I might mention too, that we're not the only ones looking at this. Probably, I don't know if anybody's heard of New Amsterdam. New York is considering. Northern, South Florida, Colorado. And it's all about representation. Folks, we have none. We've got to get to the table to discuss this one way or the other. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, folks. Can I do it from back here? Okay, thanks. Anyway, first of all, that website is www.soj51.net. That will give you all the finances you need. Second thing is, I look around Plumas County, it breaks my heart. That gentleman said he's been here since 1970. Remember Plumas Rexall, the Reeds? What a great family. How about the Barkers? What a wonderful family they were. How about the time when Chester would go and they'd play Quincy? And by gosh, that'd be the event of the week. Everybody would go there. You had lumber. You had an economy. You couldn't get into Buck's Lake unless you made a reservation a year ahead of time. What is it now? Really and truly, there's a couple of things that I think we have to look at. Number one, I'm not going to ask it for a show of hands because I know everybody's affected, the fire tax. Let's look at what the fire tax is. The first 74 million, and this is the government of California, this is not my statistics. The first 50 million out of the first 74 million they took went to the general fund every year. I'm going to repeat that. 50 million goes to the general fund every year. On top of that, 12 million goes to the young man or young lady who goes into your yard and says, "You know, this bush is a little too close. This one needs to be taken out. That needs to be taken out." That's 12 million. 10 million goes to an administration fee. This is not my fact. This is a fact in California. They take a 10, excuse me, a 14 to 40% administration fee on everything they do. So much for California's money. The other thing is, the other 2 million we have left goes toward literature on fire prevention. So out of the 74 million they took from you, how did that benefit Southern California? Well, 50 million goes to the general fund. Wouldn't it be great to be a legislator down in Southern California and pass laws and taxes on people who are not, their constituents have no say, and put it into the general fund? Everybody here is affected that way. As a Board of Supervisors, you get a budget. You may go from June to July, I don't know. You may go from June to June. In Shasta County, which that man mentioned, they did not get the $3 million for their mental health. They didn't get it. What does that do? Who's going to pay for that? We also had a fire because a guy wanted to put rocket fuel in his home. It blew up. Our sheriff brought in 27 agencies. Guess what? State of California said they didn't have any money. The gas taxes are going up 80 cents a gallon. Is that going to affect my son-in-law and daughter-in-law that live in the Bay Area who take bark? No. That's going to affect us or you if you have to go to a doctor somewhere, or maybe have to drive away to get your mail. The whole thing is, is really and truly, all these people are asking, and they're all the way around the corner here. And what they're asking is one simple thing. Help us to help you help all of us.
Amen. Yeah, I'd like to say, my name is Mark Mitchell. I'm out of Tager for Greigle. And as Kevin knows, he's one of my neighbors, this fellow over here brought up the environmental issues. For one, we have a backyard of 60,000-plus acres that have burned. Now, that 60,000 acres have rotted because of our wonderful government.
Right.
And also to bring up the school education. How many of your children, grandchildren, get to learn how to put a condom on a banana? That's baloney. Thankfully, I'm a Christian man, otherwise I'd use other language. The education system is down the tubes. California's one of the worst sports. If we had the state of Jefferson, I know that would be one of the number-one priorities. There's nothing more important than education. Educating our kids, educating our grandkids. It's the lack of education that has brought us to this point now. That's why I'm saying...
Just as a point of order, you know, I don't think this was correctly identified on your agenda. There was no speaker identified on your agenda. And then you've been handed this copy of some document that was not part of your agenda packet, and is not available to the audience. So I think we might have some issues there.
Okay.
And now, now you can start my three minutes. I'm Delaney. I live here in Quincy. And, you know, I hear these folks, and I understand what they're, what they feel. I feel really disenfranchised by a lot of what comes out of Washington, D.C. But I don't think that the state of Jefferson is the answer to that. Maybe you saw the headline that I saw, that according to certain studies, America is now an oligarchy, not a democracy, not a representative democracy. And that's not because we don't have two senators. It's because of the amount of corporate money that goes into politics. And forming the state of Jefferson is not going to change that. So that's one thing. Another complaint is that natural resources are overregulated, and they want private property and land whose controls return to local jurisdictions. I don't think a new state is going to substantively change that. 75% of the land base in Plumas County is federal land. It's national forest. You know, you're not going to, creating a new state is not going to free you from federal mandates like the Endangered Species Act, the EPA, need clean air, clean water, or for that matter, the Affordable Care Act and No Trial Left Behind. Okay? You're still going to have to accommodate the spotted owl and the mountain yellow-legged frog. I think that we need a reality check. Succeeding from California would be a legal nightmare and an economic disaster that could take decades to sort out. Both assets and liabilities would have to be divided in this divorce. California, especially in a drought, is not going to just hand over the Feather River watershed and the state water project. It took 50 years for Virginia and West Virginia to negotiate how they were going to apportion debt when they split. And I think California's going to be way more complicated bag of worms there. California currently has, and this figure varies, from everywhere from 250 to 750 billion dollars in debt. Depends on how you calculate things like your unfunded mandates. In a best-case scenario, on a per capita basis, Plumas County's share would be in the neighborhood of $150 million.
No, it wouldn't now.
I hear a lot, hey, that's from the Legislative Analyst's Office that he quoted, and I didn't read it the same way he did. I hear a lot about rights, but much less about responsibilities. This proposal would join some of the poorest counties in California, and no matter how you slice it, per capita income, property tax base, sales tax, we are among, or these counties are among the poorest. How basic services like police, roads, and education will be funded? I don't know. You know, we don't like to hear it, but the wealthier counties do help to float our boat. Nearly 2/3 of our per pupil funding comes from richer counties via the state and back to us.
Thank you.
Right there, the group?
Hi, I'm going to do this here instead of trying to make my way to the speaker, to the microphone. My name is Claire Schumacher, and I live in Lassen County. And as I'm listening to some of the responses, I'm thinking, "Okay, gosh darn, we're not going to be able to change a thing. We might as well just lay on our backs and let everything steamroll over us now." Well, this is hope we hold. Absolutely hope. We're working in Lassen County. We want to do the same thing in Lassen County. There were only 3% of the founders of this country who got involved in the revolution. We're a small group, but we're a mighty group. Please, folks, give us hope. Help us, help us. This is an opportunity. We're not going to lay on our backs and let this continue. Thank you.
Anybody else for a public comment?
Any comments out there? Right here. Thank you.
I just want to say that I'm rather...
Wait on one.
Okay. Hang on. Go ahead.
I'm rather new to this. I'm trying to familiarize myself with the issues. I understand that there are people who are angry, and they feel disenfranchised from the government. The problem is, is that we don't have enough information. And quite frankly, I don't think you as a Board of Supervisors have enough input from people in the county. Without the financial information that was requested, without more input from all people in the county, but just not just the people who are most vocal, I don't see how you can possibly make a decision.
Next, sir.
Hi, my name is Gary Bryant. I'm the vice chair of Plumas Libertarian Party. Excuse me, I'm taking a break from work. I work for Ranson Burger. Anyway, I see this wonderful thing of Jefferson as a thing for the left, about civil liberties. And especially when more and more, we're living in a police state. I love the fact that this Jefferson thing, and especially being more of a libertarian state where the role of government is to protect all lives, all walks of life. That sticks within the Constitution. Excuse me, I'm nervous. Anyway, we, our northern vice chair, Gail Morgan, endorses this, and so do I and our party too. Again, when you look at civil liberties, when this really benefits left, the people who want to open a business in a free market of raw milk, raw, you know, cheese, everything, that people, voluntary... Anyway, we, our Northrop Vice Chair, Gail Morgan, endorses this, and so do I and our party too. Again, when you look at civil liberties, when this really benefits left, the people who want to open a business in a free market of raw milk, raw, you know, cheese, everything, that people voluntary exchange to honor that. And then the role for government is when things go wrong. When that horrifying thing happened down in Southern California, paramilitary police state that invaded that farm. That was awful. And it really opened my eyes about how this could be really beneficial to the left on civil liberties. Not only on the right on dollars and cents, but in the left, civil liberties, where it's more local government, local taxes, local spending, a bottom-to-up government, not the other way around, which we've been having for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Gentleman right here?
Yes. I live in Sierra County. Tom Dot is my name, and I've got a history with Plumas County too. That's where my birth certificate's from, in Protola. My great-grandparents are buried in Taylorsville. So this stuff affects me in the heart, in the heritage. And I have a ranch now, and the tax that was brought up, 80 more cents on it, when I tried to put up, hey, feel it right away. Everything I do is getting tighter and tighter. And what we're asking here for you guys to be able to vote on this is to get a spot at the table. It ain't saying you've got to go do anything. It's saying you've got a spot at the table. And please, that is what we need. Thank you.
Hi. I'm sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
My name is Barbara Keeling. I am from Lassen County. My husband currently works at High Desert State Prison. He is a state employee. If we can't get the state of California to change, at least northern part, to change to the state of Jefferson, we would leave California. Even though he works for the state and has a really good-paying job. It's all the laws and regulations, the curriculum at the schools, the requirements. We can't do this anymore. We just can't. It's not healthy for the families. We need to have a change. We need to have a chance to make a change.
Alan Schumacher in Lassen County. I would just like to remind all of you the three unforgivable words that the other side likes to use, and every one of them used it. They all said, I quote, "I don't think."